I can't hear you speak up here. Whisper like nothing.
Like I can't even, like you think I can hear? It's okay, nobody can hear.
I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order this evening on Thursday, June 5th at 7:37 PM. Starting now, we are going to have the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Baller.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to have this prior read, our zoning board responsibilities pertaining to use and variances and also area variances.
Before you start, do you want to do a roll call?
We'll do it after this.
The zoning board has the authority to grant area variances from the area or dimensional requirements outlined in the Town of Zoning Code. In making its determination, the board shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In making such determination, the board also considers, number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And lastly, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. That's for area variances. The board in granting of area variances will grant the minimum variance that it deems necessary and adequate, and at the same time preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
No, we don't have any. Thank you. And I want to point out, too, that it's state law that mandates this. All right, so we are mandated by state law to do those things. And I'd just like to have that read before each and every zoning board meeting, so that everybody understands what powers we do and do not have. All right, I want that to be clear. All right, let's have a roll call here.
Ms. Pryor?
Present.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Ms. Alinsky?
Here.
Ms. Ruth?
Here. And I'd like to also add that we're going to have Ms. Alinsky as a full voting member this evening, although she is an alternate. All right, so we are returning to Chapter 842 of the petition number 634, New York, Boston, to LLC Buffalo Solar Project at 7832 Fettick Road, who is seeking three area variances, 380-foot feet for the south side, 375 feet for the north side, and 23.8 acres for variances for a new proposed solar array. We have been going at this literally for two years. I've looked at this application, I've researched this application and solar farms in general, visited the site several times, I studied it, I researched it some more, as did the entire board exhaustively. During the public hearing and the applicant's presentation, the cases presented by the applicant were for use variances that they kept referring to. What they are applying for with us are area variances, two different animals, two different set of criteria that we follow, both though under state law, New York state law, but there is a difference. But nonetheless, we looked at them, and I looked at it under the Public Service Utility Standard, which was requested, which gives them leniency under our prongs that we have to look at under New York state law. The conditions for approval, does it create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood? Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved if the variance is not granted? Is the requested variance substantial? Will the variance have an adverse effect on the physical impact or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Is the alleged difficulty self-created? All right, that's what we have to look at when we get any application. We have four tonight. Every application goes through that test, that balance. But because they are under the Public Service Utility Standard, they realize a bit of leniency instead of the more specific and direct criteria that a normal applicant would follow. So considering that, I would like to put forth the motion to deny the application for the size of the property lot variance that they're shooting for, which is 23.8 acres. So, under the Public Necessity Standard, the project is subject to a lighter variance standard rather than the traditional or more restrictive one. When the intrusion or burden on the local community, including those related to aesthetic concerns, potential environmental impacts would be minimal, and under the Public Utility Necessity Standard, the applicant must demonstrate, now we're going back to these prongs here, that the project is a public necessity and that it is required to render safe and adequate service. Well, under the analysis in the Free Point Solar LLC versus the Town of Athens, their department, and Delaware River Solar LLC versus the Town of Aurora Zoning Board of Appeals, Erie County Supreme Court cases, the community solar projects such as this one proposed by DRS are deemed a public necessity such that the Public Utility Variance Standard applies. All right, that's what has been deemed to be right. All right, but there are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, that make it more feasible to seek the variance than to pursue alternative locations. However, there's no legal requirement that applicants analyze each and every possible parcel of land before obtaining a variance. So, the solar law for large-scale solar energy systems such as the project requires a maximum lot area of 50 acres. That's what's in our code. The requested variance of 23.8 acres is substantial. The applicant has selected a parcel knowing that the lot size exceeded the code. The applicant alludes to, quote, "a few parcels were identified," unquote, as alternatives, but did not indicate whether any of those parcels could have been a site for the project without the substantial variance that's requested here. The board does not find DRS's response adequate under this prong. All right, the intrusion and burden on the community, including those related to aesthetic concerns and potential environmental impacts associated with the requested variance is minimal or can be mitigated. While the granting of the lot area variance does cause an incremental increase in impacts to neighboring property owners, and further, granting the lot area variance does not provide the project a greater opportunity to comply with the setback requirements of Town Code. So, all right, let's see. So that's for the first variance request, all right, which is the 23.8-acre variance. All right, that is my motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Actually, can you do yea or nay?
Oh.
So we can get that on record.
Sure.
Ms. Pryor?
Yea.
No, are you approving?
I'm approving. I'll just, can I just say approve?
Approving the motion to deny.
To deny.
To deny, yeah. Is that good? Approve the motion to deny.
Mr. May?
Approve the motion to deny.
Mr. Ballard?
Approve the motion to deny.
Ms. Alinsky?
Approve the motion to deny.
Ms. Ruth?
Approve the motion to deny.
Yes.
All right, so there's another variance that we have here, too, for the property line setbacks from 500 feet to 125 feet for the north property line, and 500 feet to 120.3 feet on the south property line. I would make a motion to also deny these variances. So, that the project is a public necessity in that it is required to render safe and adequate service. Under the analysis in the Free Point Solar LLC versus Town of Athens, their department, and Delaware River Solar LLC versus Town of Aurora Zoning Board of Appeals, Erie County Supreme Court cases, community solar projects such as this one proposed by DRS are deemed a public necessity such that the Public Utility Variance Standards apply. There are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, that make it more feasible to seek the variance than to pursue alternative locations. However, there is legal, no legal requirement that applicants analyze each and every possible parcel of land before obtaining a variance. The applicant has selected a parcel that limits buildable area because of the presence of a utility easement, wetlands and streams, and forested areas to offset these self-selected limitations. The applicant is requesting a substantial setback variant to offset the impacts. The applicant alludes to, quote, "a few parcels were identified," unquote, as alternatives, but indicate whether any of those parcels could have been a site for the project without the substantial setback variance requested here. The board does not find DRS's response adequate under this prong. The intrusion and burden on the community, including those related to aesthetic concerns and potential environmental impacts, associated with the requested variance is minimal or can be mitigated. The purpose of the town's solar law, which we already have in place, is to, quote, "balance the potential impact on neighbors when solar energy systems may be installed near their property and to mitigate the impact of solar systems on environmental and agricultural resources while preserving the rights of property owners to install solar energy systems that with respect to large solar energy systems," unquote. To accomplish this, the solar law provides that, quote, "aesthetic impacts will be reduced by imposing various site requirements upon large-scale solar facilities, including screening, height limitations, setbacks, and others," unquote. While the Public Utility Standard supersedes the five statutory criteria of Town Law 267-B3B for granting area variances, the statutory criteria are informative in assessing whether the impacts intended to be minimized or mitigated by the town's property line setback requirement would continue to be minimized or mitigated as the setback variance is granted. As set forth below, because of the substantial variance requested and the significant detrimental impact to the project and the surrounding rural residential neighborhood, the aesthetic concerns related to the requested variance cannot be minimized or mitigated, or on a hill. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The neighborhood and the immediate proximity to the proposed project consists of a collection of rural residential properties with a panoramic view shed of Lake Erie to the west adjacent to what is now farmland. The topography of the area is such that many of these residential properties will have an unobstructed view of the solar panels that cannot be mitigated with screening on the project parcel. As such, there will be a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood from an agricultural to a utility use that will likely impact property values. The Erie County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board expressed concerns that the project would result in fragmentation of agricultural lands, create farm management challenges resulting in the loss of land available for agricultural production, and loss of productive soils classified as prime and drained in farmland conversion due to cumulative impacts from solar developments. Additionally, construction noise, especially pile driving activities, will have substantial impact on the residences. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, the developer has not demonstrated the project is uneconomical if it conforms with a setback requirement or a substantially lesser setback variance. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Yes, it is. The required setback variance is substantial, representing a 75% reduction in the setback requirement. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And yes, as discussed above, the project substantially changes characteristics of the neighborhoods. While the proposed project is a permitted use under the Town Zoning, such permitted use is in the context of the setbacks and other area requirements provided within the Town Code. Contrary to the comprehensive plan objective of preserving regular, or I'm sorry, rural character, the topography of the project site is not conducive to changing the character of the surrounding neighborhood from a scenic rural residential area to an industrial setting. Number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance? Yes, the difficulties of developing the project were self-created as the applicant was aware of the need for substantial setback variances when developing this project. I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
Approve the petition to deny.
Mr. May?
Approve the petition to deny.
Mr. Ballard?
Approve the petition to deny.
Ms. Alinsky?
Approve the petition to deny.
Ms. Ruth?
Approve the motion to deny. I also have a resolution to read into the minutes. We'll buy in later. Town of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Resolution Number 2025-001, Application of New York, Boston 2 LLC Buffalo Solar Project for Area Variances. Whereas the Town of Boston received the application for zoning variances, a special use permit, and cyclone review from New York, Boston 2 LLC, an entity associated with Delaware River Solar, related to the development of a 3.6-megawatt solar facility at the project at 7832 Fettick Road, the project site, the first proposed large-scale solar development in the town. And whereas the Town Board classified the solar project as a seeker type 1 action asserted lead agency in the shoot to seeker negative declaration for the project on November 6, 2024, and whereas the town's regulations governing solar energy systems, the solar law, local law, number 5 of 2019, provide that the purpose of the solar law is to balance the potential impact on neighbors when solar energy systems may be installed near their property and mitigate the impact of solar systems on environmental and agricultural resources while preserving the rights of property owners to install solar energy systems without excess regulation. The Town of Boston recognizes the importance of solar energy systems in generating electricity for on-premises and off-premises use, the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in support for emerging solar energy system economic development. Whereas in enacting the solar law, the Town Board indicated that it is recognized solar energy systems may be perceived to be aesthetically detrimental to surrounding properties, especially residential neighbors. The proposed regulations provide measures to lessen the potential for such impacts and for aesthetic impacts to be considered in the review process. Seeks to accommodate public demand for solar energy systems while minimizing potential adverse impact. Upon neighboring uses and aesthetic impacts will be reduced as a result of the solar law, which imposes various site requirements upon large-scale solar facilities, including lighting, height limitations, setbacks, and others. And whereas the project site is located in a residential agricultural zoning district, which is considered a residential district, and whereas large-scale solar energy systems such as the project are specially permitted uses in an RA zoning district, and whereas the solar law requires that for large-scale solar energy systems such as the project, the setback of at least 500 feet from all property lines boarding residential district and maximum lot area of 50 acres. And whereas on or about December 16, 2024, the project applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for area variances for the property line setback requirement for the project from 500 feet to within 125 feet of the southern, western, and western property lines, a 375-foot deviation, and within 225 feet of the northern property line, a 275-foot deviation, and an area variance from the maximum lot level of 50 acres, the lot line area variance. Whereas the subject parcel for the project is 73.8 acres, a 23.8-acre deviation. Collectively, the variance application, and whereas for a traditional request for an area variance, the ZBA making its determination shall take into consideration the benefits to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the board shall also consider whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created in the granting of the area variance. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, whether the requested area variance is substantial, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Whereas the New York State appellate courts have recently deemed large-scale solar energy projects such as the project to be treated as necessary public utilities for the purposes of request for zoning variances, including use in area variances because of their contribution to the state's renewable energy goals, see Free Point Solar LLC versus Town of Athens Zoning Board of Appeals, 234 AD 3D 127, 3D, or in 2024, applying the Public Utility Necessity Standard of Consolidated Edison Company of New York Inc. versus Hoffman, 43 New York, 2D, 598, 1978. And whereas the premise of the Public Utility Necessity Standard is that the public necessity must be viewed in a broader consideration of the benefits to the public at large beyond the immediate community, counterbalances, typical considerations related to local environmental or aesthetic impacts. And whereas, under the Public Necessity Standard, the project is subject to a lighter variance standard rather than the traditional or more restrictive variance criteria, when the intrusion or burden on the local community include those related to aesthetic concerns, potential environmental impacts would be minimal, and whereas under the Public Utility Necessity Standard, the applicant must demonstrate that the project is a public necessity and that is required to render safe and adequate service. There are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, that make it more feasible to seek the variance than to pursue alternative locations. However, there is no legal requirement that applicants analyze each and every possible parcel of land before obtaining a variance. And the intrusion and burden on the community, including those related to aesthetic concerns and potential environmental impacts, so the saving with the requested variance is minimal or can be mitigated. Whereas a public hearing was held on the variance application on March 6 of 2025 and continued on May 1, 2025, and the public was invited to comment on the variance application at the hearing or submit comments prior to the hearing for consideration by the ZBA. And whereas following the March 6, 2025, ZBA meeting, the applicant provided responses to comments, additional line of site profiles and noise generation information for the project. Whereas at its June 5, 2025, meeting, the ZBA made the findings below, which are being memorialized in these resolutions, attached here to us are the statement of findings. Now therefore be it resolved, the board finds that the granting of the requested lot area variance up for the project will result in a significant intrusion or burden on the community that outweighs the benefits to the general public at large for the project. The board finds that on balance, the applicant's request for a lot area variance shall not be granted. And be it further resolved, the board finds that the granting of the requested setback variances will result in a significant intrusion or burden on the community that outweighs the benefits of the general public at large from the project. The board finds that the applicant's request for setback variance shall not be granted. And be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the Town of Boston, Town Clerk, within five days of the date of this resolution, and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. And we will have a roll call and a vote for the adoption of the foregoing resolution, which I will make as a motion. Now.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
I approve the resolution.
Mr. May?
I approve the resolution.
Mr. Ballard?
I approve the resolution.
Ms. Alinsky?
I approve the resolution.
Ms. Ruth?
I approve the resolution. And Mary Hammond.
I'd like a copy of that.
Would you state your name and address?
My name is Charles Malcolm. I address 140 Pearl Street, Buffalo, New York. I'd like that sheet of paper that you were reading off of when you were doing the three motions before you read the resolution. So just make sure you don't dispose of that.
Sheet of paper that I was reading off of?
You had a packet that you were reading from when you were doing your initial findings before you read from the resolution?
It'll be attached to the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll be sent.
Okay.
Within five days, yes. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you, too.
Good seeing you again.
You'll be seeing us again?
Yeah, good. I look forward to it.
All right, we have three more to go. Come on, you guys, where are you going? Whoa, whoa, whoa!
I know.
Whoa! I saw your car. Little touch of air. God bless you all.
Taylor Road, the 14th fireworks display. Big one.
All right, petition number 636, Jeffrey Snyder. Hey, you guys, can you close the door? Thanks, Mark.
Keep it down, we've got some business here.
All right. Petition number 636, Jeffrey Snyder, 5521 James Drive, seeks two area variances, variances for 1,104 square foot by two-foot height to erect a 1,944-square-foot, 23-foot-high accessory structure. We have a letter from Mr. Snyder, to whom it concerns, I'm requesting variance to construct a 1,900-square-foot pole barn on my property located 5521 James Drive. The overall dimensions of the structure will be 54 feet wide, 36 feet long, 23 feet high, including the cupola. This structure will be utilized to provide climate-controlled storage for existing and planned assets and equipment, as well as future pet wash, we have two dogs, and restroom facilities to utilize while using our pool. Aesthetics have been carefully considered to ensure that the design of the structure conforms with existing properties and creates an attractive addition to the neighborhood and our property. Best regards, Jeffrey Snyder. And then from Mr. Reed, our Assistant Code Enforcement Officer. Petitioner wishes to obtain two variances for his property in the above address. The variances required are as follows pursuant to Article 18, Roman letters, supplement of lot size and open space requirement, Section 123-136B4, for the height and size of the building. The size of the structure you propose will be 1,944 square feet and 23-foot high. Allowable is 840 square feet and 21 feet in height. So the variance is 1,104 square feet and 2 feet for the height. From Sarah DeJard, our planning consultant regarding petition. From Sarah DeJardin, our planning consultant, regarding petition number 636, Jennifer Snyder seeking two area variances for proposed accessory structure at 5521 James Drive. This action is classified as type 2 action under seeker and therefore is not subject to review under seeker. All right, I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Olensky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes. Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, well, good evening.
Step up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Jeffrey Snyder, 5521 James Drive, Amber.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I think I outlined it pretty well in my letter to the board. We're looking to put a pole barn on. It's also going to be used for vehicle storage, recreational vehicle storage, lot equipment storage, pool store, furniture storage. And we usually have a pool full of children all summer long, and a bathroom for them to use so they're not running into the house. So, and I plan to retire soon, so I need a place to hang clothes.
Okay. So in our work session, we were taking a look at things. We all have been up there individually and taken a look. I noticed that you have your site work already done and drainage already put in. And questioned whether or not you were going to take the other shed down.
The other shed is water.
The one by the pool?
The poolhouse, no, we do not intend to take the poolhouse. That has all the equipment, the pool pilots, the saltwater system is all in the poolhouse. So that's not being primarily used for storage and storage.
It's a big building on that little lot.
That side is 120 by 189, that's a regular double-march size. They're putting the doors back.
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors?
I have neighbors to either side of the group, let me see.
Great. I'd love to hear from them.
Kostow, 352 James Drive, I live on the east side of Jeff.
He's by your last name, for me.
Sure, K O S T O W N I A K. Been working with Jeff on the project and helping out, highly managing the project. It's my background. Civil engineer for the Towne Ford Park Engineering Department, so I understand all rules of regulations, because we're trying to work on them. I'm here to answer any kind of technical questions as far as, which has as far as the building type. The height variance to 2 feet is actually just from the decorative hoopla. The roof is that high because it's matching the building, its existing home has a seat that's cool. So it's just kind of architectural. So it's going to be a nice building. It's been staked out, we looked at it, it's not even visible from the road because of the trees. You guys, if you went out there, you see there's a tree line that's up against the backyard. Mrs. Smolinski here, she owns the property to the rear and to the west. So everyone we've talked to on the street doesn't have a problem with it. And there are several buildings in the area that are similar in that there. So we just hope you guys get that into consideration. And any questions?
So talk to me about the drainage.
She flow, there is some collection alongside the driveway, but it's just going to be she flow and it's going to flow onto property that Jeff and I both own to the rear of the project. So flowing onto his own property.
Because I always calculate the runoff, because I learned the hard way. I put up a 60 by 80-foot riding arena at my house. I did put substantial drainage in there and I built it up and everything, but you know, it just generates so much water, you know, because you're taking a permeable surface and returning it into a hardened surface. And just figuring for an inch of rain, you're going to generate 1,211 gallons running off, being shed off that roof. So.
It's going to be collected and it'll daylight onto Jeff's homeland, and then it'll flow onto Jeff's old land, the full of our pond on our land. So it's all going to be collected, and that's where it's going. If you were to walk in the woods, you'd see exactly where it will run off. I understand exactly what you're saying. But Jeff, I'll get the locations or splatter.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
That's what I do.
Me too.
Any other questions, Gary?
Any consideration on a solar platform building?
We could build a barn. I mean, it's piss-tall, but I'm going to put the cat back in the pillowcase. Build the site you want and right out of the gate.
I'd water it towards.
Yeah, it's constant noise, and that's more. It's really, we staked it out, it's staked out. It's not, you know, it's a little intrusive to the logic, it's on there, but the thing that might, you know, might be making more visible is that we have raised the site so that the sewer connection would work, that was the sewer authority. You know, we've worked with every agency, got all their approvals, we're going to back up the wrench coming in, they're sewer tapped out. We're going to put a sewer list station in, apparently sewer didn't want to do that. So they're the ones who force this, they don't want it in the air. Jeff's invested quite a bit of money in his own property, and this one, it's going to look fantastic.
Drawings are beautiful there.
Yeah, you know, you know what it takes.
Oh, can you bring that up? So, you know, because you had to raise everything, is that taken consideration? You said that it's going to be the same height of the house even after you've raised it?
Finishes floors could be pretty close to the finished floors of existing house.
But the height isn't.
The height's going to be probably lower than it, but it still hits that 22 feet because of the decorative hoopla. With different colors, it's not even a problem.
I was going to say, it's a really fancy house.
Lisa, can I speak?
Sure, can, half up today.
I will.
Right there.
Kathy Smolinski, 5509 James Drive, Amber, New York. My husband's put in that subdivision. That is going to be an asset to our neighborhood, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm on the left of it, and it's coming out beautifully. So I really would like it to go up. So there.
Thank you. He let you guys swim there, doesn't he? I got you. All right, boys and girls.
Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on behalf or against for this petition? That I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Olensky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion. Given the support from the neighborhood, I will like to make a motion to approve petition 636. I'll go through my conditions to approval. Does it create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood? No. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved if the variance is not granted? No. Is the requested variance substantial? Yes. Will the variance have an adverse effect on the physical impact or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? Yes.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Olensky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes. Make sure you get in touch with Bob Reed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because you have a timeframe on it.
Six months. There's six months.
Six months you have to.
Do you have an email address?
All right, moving on to petition number 637, Christopher Ford, 5868 Woodley Court, seeking two area variances, the variances for 100 square foot by 8 foot height to erect a 2,100 square foot, 31-foot-high accessory structure. From Sarah DeJardin, regarding petition number 637, Christopher Ford is seeking two area variances for a proposed accessory structure of 5868 Woodley Court. This action is classified as a type 2 action under seeker and therefore is not subject to review under seeker. From Mr. Ford, notice of intent, intended purpose of the barn garage at 5868 Woodley Court includes storage for my tractor, tractor implements, side-by-side camper, shop for storage of tools, and working on projects associated with my boat camper and work on my personal vehicles. Remaining storage areas to store newer decorations that have filled my basement and attic in the house. Also storage for items that are currently in a large storage unit left to us by a family member. From Robert Reed, code enforcement officer, petitioner wishes to obtain two variances for his property at the above address. The variances required are as follows pursuant to Article 25, supplemental lot size and open space requirements, Section 123-136B4, which states be in our district's number four, maximum allowable height and storage footage of lot coverage for one-and-a-half-story accessory buildings is as follows. Property is 4.43 acres between three and less than five acres. The maximum allowable size is 2,000 square foot and 23 feet in height. A variance is necessary for the increased square footage and increased height, asking for variance of 100 square feet and eight. I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Olensky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes.
Hello.
Christopher Ford, 5868 Woodley Court, Ford's Park. Ed described the, I got three-car garage, I got one car in it. And the tractor's been pushed in the backyard because of all the storage.
Got a lot of stuff, got a lot of stuff.
You have no idea. Let me just put it in perspective. My last projects, my wife gave me for decorations, and everybody see the two-foot-high lightbulbs that came out? They look like the old-style lightbulbs. Well, you string five of those together with four-inch pipe, and it looks like a string of lights, but they're like, those in the garage right now. Taking up half a bay. So yes, my tractor's in the back, my chipper's in the backyard. I want to get all this stuff out of the backyard, where it's getting destroyed by mice, and on the site, I just don't like things sitting outside. Dead in there, you saw the folks sitting in the yard. My son's camper is coming over. So all this to get in there. And all those projects I did were in the middle of winter on my concrete floor in the garage. So I'm retired, I can't do that anymore. I need to get indoors. So that's the square footage. Height-wise, it matches my, I don't know if you noticed, if you took my garage, the front, it's a very steep pitch, or roofline, that is the same pitch and the same three windows that are on the front. If you looked at, if you stood on the front of my garage, you'd be looking at the front of the barn, and it just pitched over to that side and extended longer. Same with the dormer. So the height issue is because of the way the garage is built, trying to maintain the same aesthetic of the houses, the same constructions. I mean, it's going to be sided, asphalt roofing, something, it's going to match the house as if it's an element to it, not a add-on to it. So the square footage is just a little bit, just because that's how much we can get in there. But the height is because of the aesthetics of the current house that we have.
How about the? We did talk about drainage, didn't we?
We did. So the 18-inch, no, 12, the 12-inch pipe that you saw the end of it in, that was required by, there was a natural swale that went through that whole area. There's drainage inlets on the other side that pick up all the water and carry it down through the area. It'll be gutted, drains, some pumping.
So you're going to have some jacks on it?
It's everything going to be tied into, no, I mean, a regular wooden piece on that.
Oh, you're having the asphalt?
The only metal portions are on the dormer, and then there's a four-foot, my garage has a four-foot overhanging posts in front of the garage, we're matching that on the front.
Okay.
And those are the only small sections of steel that'll be up there. Everything else is asphalt. So then it's going to have the asphalt to gutters, everything tied into that drain that goes into the back, everything underground.
All right. I did figure out your runoff. Because you know I would.
I do have another, my dad's a retired drainage salesman. So I do have, and I use one in the house, and I have another one in the back, which is going to go into the backyard. It's a huge, like, half circle, it gets buried and stolen, it's vacant. You pump, you dump water.
Like a dry well.
Basically, you're hitting, it's massive, it just, we're going to dump everything into that, whatever doesn't drain out of that fills to the top, and then it goes out the pipe, and then it'll tie into the rest of the drainage of that.
Yeah, because your building is even bigger than the other guy's building. So an inch of rain is going to shed 1,308 gallons. And the gullywashers we've been getting lately, it's even gotten wet on the inside of my riding arena. And I've got double drainage all the way around the building and out, so.
Yeah, I'm very, I mean, with the rest of the yard and everything, the drainage we did, I'm very particular about that. So everything will be tied into something, and we'll be going, like I said, there's a ravine, a gully in the back there that goes down, and every once, everything funnels into that. My neighbor's got a, he cut last year a path, either side-by-side, and there're bikes and, you know, there're trail bikes and all that through there, and he's got a pipe. It continues from where that pipe is, and it goes back there, because that's the swale that all the water goes through. He's got a pipe under his driveway or his path back there, and once you get past that, it dumps into that ravine, and it just goes out, goes out from there.
Did you speak to any of your neighbors?
One time, there's only one neighbor that even will even see it. I didn't speak to him. He said, and I spoke to him again, we walked in again, like, tonight before we came, like, came over here, he didn't want to post it. So he didn't want to put his name on any documents or anything like that, and he said, I don't post it, it's your property, do what you want. The only other neighbor that contacted me, he wasn't sure where it was going, he's up front. I think he was worried it was going in front of the, our current house, between us there, you know, what trees you're going to take out, like, it's not even, nothing's going on over there. But he was fine, so.
I can't remember, is the building going to be lit?
Lit.
Lit.
Other than maybe, like, you put on these sconces, you put on the side of a garage or something like that, that's all, nothing aesthetic-wise, and whether there's a sign of the Omand or a light there, but.
You said you were putting in a foundation, you're putting in a partial basement or something?
As long as you're doing it, really, go put a basement in it as long as you do. I, I'm not a big fan of pole barns. I just don't, longevity-wise, I'm not sold on, you know, a long time ago when you had a telephone pole that was coated in a lot of things you can't use now, and stuck in the ground, it lasted a long time. I just, I'm not comfortable with that. I, if I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it where it's going to stand, it, you know, not going to have issues and that, so I wanted a foundation, so. And as long as I was doing the foundation, the building, you want to put a basement in, you're digging it out anyway, so. So yeah, so that's what we did.
So is it a full basement?
Partial.
So you'll have storage down there, too? So it's kind of like having two levels.
Is that the spony head from your wife? So she can't fill up with that, too? You said she's got everything in the attic?
Yeah, I mean, I got 750 above the garage, and there's a walkway, a couple square feet up there. So it's, yeah, it's, it's kind of a very excessive one. I need to do, we're overflowing, I need to do something for this.
So would you consider going 10 feet smaller, make it, you know, so that it's?
Well, 4 feet, I calculated it, 4 feet would bring me down 120 square feet. Not going to aesthetically or what my neighbor sees, and that's not going to change anything.
Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on behalf of this petition? That I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Solinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
I'd like to make a motion to accept petition six thirty-seven. Does it create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood? Can the benefit be sought by the applicant to be achieved if the variance is not granted? No. Is the requested variance substantial? No. Will the variance have an effect on the physical impact, environment condition of the neighborhood? No. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? Yes.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Ms. Renay?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Solinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
All right, moving on to petition number six thirty-eight. Brookfield Properties of Western New York, seventy-eight forty Boston State Road, seeking an area variance to create lots that do not have the required frontage on a public street. From Bob Reed, code enforcement officer, petitioner wishes to obtain a variance for his property, variances for his property at seventy-four eighty Boston State Road. The proper permit process was followed for construction, but as was recently discovered by the builder, constraints for the funding stream at the federal level from Freddie Mac prohibit further funding on this parcel as planned. The large parcel is being divided into three smaller parcels from one. Further, parcels are in a split zoning of R A and R three with buildings being constructed solely on the section of the R three zone. The variance required is as follows. Pursuant to article twenty-three, lot frontage on streets required for dwellings, one-two-three-dash-one-two-two, no dwelling shall be erected on any lot which does not have immediate frontage on a street held by the owner thereof in a fee simple, subject to easements of record as defined in this chapter. The right-of-way easement is provided in the deed to all parcels. Recommendation was made to seek variance even though at present time there is an easement. A map has been provided showing the parcels and has issued proper SBL numbers by the assessor. The zoning is correct for these units and no other variances are required. From Sarah DeJarden, our planning consultant, regarding petition number six thirty-eight, Brookfield Properties of Western New York is seeking an area variance to create lots at seventy-eight forty Boston State Road that do not have the required frontage on a public street. This action is classified as a type-two action under seeker and is therefore not subject to review under seeker. Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Ms. Renay?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Solinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the board. Nicholas Tuttle here on behalf of petitioner from a T N T M. Appreciate taking the time tonight. I was shocked that it went this quickly with the other matters.
How real.
So, we are here today, we are looking for SBL numbers to be issued to, we are dividing one parcel into three different parcels for commercial funding. We've been doing this commercial funding for quite a while now, as you know, it does not go very quickly, so this is kind of a last-minute item to close on, phase two of the project. I do have larger blowups of the survey if you would like copies of those. I know we provided no larger funding.
We have, we do have some.
Oh, perfect, I just wanted to make sure, I haven't highlighted two to show the parcels on where they're going to, if you'd like, copies for everyone, if you would like them all.
You went through the upper.
Yeah, sure.
Might as well.
Waste paper.
It's sometimes hard to see with everything, so...
So, and I just want to note, too, that I did have a call from Paul Zarnowski, the chair of the planning board, and he said that this whole subdivision has already been approved and that basically this is a formality for the funding.
And that's where we're at right now, so that's why we're seeking that. In looking at the balancing test, I believe that our proposal does show favorable in our case for the balancing test that we look. Everything has already been approved, the buildings have already been constructed or very close to being completed or done, so we're not looking at changing any of the scope of the project, we're just looking at putting out paper bodies, basically on the survey to allow for the funding to go along. If there's any further questions that we have to answer, if any, may have.
So you're splitting that one, like, down the middle?
Yeah, so there's the, there's buildings on both sides, it would be going down the center, the parking lot. And there are easements of record already. We have the deed descriptions and the descriptions are in the package that we provided to you. We are ready to report those when, when necessary and when approved.
I just, we're easier to read, I've got to say. But it's good to see where the delineation is specifically, appreciate that.
And there's a, there's a large, very large map that we provided that folds out to...
Yeah.
There's another one that's...
Oh, an even bigger one?
Massive, yes, that if you need to see it.
Oh, in the planning board room? Yes, okay.
And I have, I have another copy in here, too, if you want to see it.
Anyone have any other questions? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Ms. Renay?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Solinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve petition six-three-eight. Conditions to approval, does it create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood? No. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved if the variance is not granted? No. Is the requested variance substantial? No. Will the variance have an adverse effect on the physical impact or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? No. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? No.
I'll second it.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Ms. Renay?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Solinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other business to be brought before this board? Jen, are there any applications so far for July?
Isn't that July? This, that, or?
July, four, five, six, seven, eight.
There are petitions for July, so?
For five, six, seven.
Was it four?
Five, six, seven.
I'll make a motion to shut her down.
I'll second.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Ms. Renay?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Solinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Rude?
Yes.